States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing on the agenda is a public hearing for the sale of Countryside Pub. We have Countryside's representatives. You're purchasing?
I'm purchasing.
I'm selling.
Selling and purchasing, okay. All right. You seem like you're getting along, that's a good thing.
We're very good friends.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, um, do you have any questions?
No.
So we're gonna have to make a motion to accept the sale of Countryside Pub from HTT LLC to AMR Real Estate, and the transfer of the liquor license from HTT LLC to AMR Enterprise. Correct?
Correct.
Do that motion?
You pretty much said move.
So moved.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes. You're free to do your seal.
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
Good, right?
Yep.
Was it panel time?
Yes, it was.
We've got everything, I'll send everything in on Tuesday.
Thank you so much.
So, they should be good.
I'm perfect, and they reach out to you, then I want to ask you time, I think I can do it.
I definitely will, Michelle, thank you. Have a great day, ladies.
Do you guys wanna close the public hearing now?
A motion to close the public hearing for Countryside Pub.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Public hearing disclosed. Thank you. Next thing is review and release of liability and responsibility for the town of Warren's Canine Dog Murray. Did you wanna give us any information on that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. In consultation with Chief Mallett, you'll find in your packet this evening, there's a letter submitted by the chief, and then there's also a draft of a release of liability and responsibilities with regards to the care and custody of Canine Murray. These two pieces of information before the board tonight are simply in draft form. Just thought the board would like to review them and possibly take action at the next meeting on these items.
I don't know if I'll have the plaque.
Or, you know, when you wanna do the plaque.
Did you wanna give us any backstory, Chief?
So, Murray's getting to be about eight years old. He does suffer from arthritis, it's getting worse, as well as a, and I put the technical word in there, but it's an advanced form of Lyme disease.
Yeah, plasmosis.
Yes. So, normally dogs retire around the eight-year mark. And it's customary that they stay with their handler, they're trained by the handler, with them every day. They're the ones they're trained to listen to. With that, with talking to Jim, is we drafted this up so all care would be the responsibility of Officer LaFleur would be taken off the town's hands, as well as any liability if their dog was to do anything to bite anyone or anything like that, the town would be responsible.
To add to the chief's report, I did contact another department, another former police chief, and she said this is customary through this, you know, this eight-to-nine-year mark for these types of animals. This is not uncommon.
Yeah, he's considered a senior at this point, to breed a dog, a Malamud.
Really technical, huh?
So even if he didn't have arthritis and Lyme disease, he would still be returned?
Yes, so that just may have sooner than.
Right.
I mean, if the town wanted to keep the dog, there would be costs associated with retraining, a new handler, with obviously upkeep and maintenance of the dog continuing on, there'd be additional costs associated with that.
But the medical costs for Murray?
It wouldn't make any sense to train a new handler with Murray, because you'd have to send them both back to school so they can recertify together and go through that and for a dog that's a senior dog. He's at the end of his career anyways, and it makes no sense, because you're just gonna have to bring a new dog in and send somebody back to training to train with that dog again. So, it makes perfect sense to retire him at this age and let him enjoy the rest of his life. He worked well for our town, and I know we're all appreciative of everything, you know, Officer LaFleur and Canine Murray has done for our town. They've done a lot of outreach and meeting with the kids and, you know.
Going out to events.
Seen him go at all kinds of events and stuff, and he has quite a following in town. Canine Murray, not Joe.
Hey, just for example, when the engine in that vehicle blew up, the next day there was eight businesses in town that donated to the engine, not even 24 hours later.
Dogs are a great tool to have, and, you know, I gotta give Joe kudos for initiating the program and getting it going, and going after it like he did to get that program moving forward, because it's very expensive, time-consuming, there's a lot involved. You know, everybody sees Murray, but they don't really see all the training involved into getting certifications to be able to be a handler and have the dog certified. You're essentially certifying two people, you know, the officer handler and the actual dog, and, you know, being able to work together, just, you know, from nothing, we had nothing before them, and they did, he did a great job. Definitely, definitely great job of him. So, you know, it looks pretty, pretty simple as far as the release.
Yeah, I agree, it seems fine. Are you running by legal and, right?
I got a template from them, and I've plugged in some, it didn't have one specific to dogs, but I changed it around a little bit, and this is, this is pretty much what I came up with.
Okay. Yeah, it seems fine.
Yeah, I'm good with it. As long as legal's good with it, and, you know, hate to lose him, you know, I know Joe's moving to Florida, and, you know, Murray's going down there with him, but, you know, Murray would have probably been retiring this year anyways, with his age, so.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Yeah. Do you have anything?
No.
Will we be able to get Joe here and Murray here?
If you give me a date, probably not next, when you say?
It will, yeah, it will either be the 7th or the 14th, and I don't know, I haven't heard back from the people. So I should hear back from them soon.
All right, so let's continue this until our next meeting, and we'll do a vote, and do all the paperwork and everything, and, you know, show our thanks for them both.
Thank you.
Okay. Wow, Joe, we're really up next.
Yeah.
So the next thing we have is appointments for fiscal year 2023. The first year appointments are for one-year terms.
Spelled with an i.
Yes, with n, that's supposed to be. I'm reading it, I'm like.
Terms.
I'm like, wait.
Yeah, I know, it sounds right, but it doesn't look right.
We know what you meant.
I had it right before.
So do you wanna do a motion for all these people, or you want me to read them?
No, I can do that. And we can do, we'll do, so one-year terms. I'll make a motion to reappoint the following people to another one-year term, and I apologize in advance for any pronunciation errors. Derek Valles, for the Planning Board Delegate to Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, Yor Kopecz, to the Cable Advisory Committee, Otto Shiletto, Conservation Commission, Philip A. Woodford, Conservation Commission, John Miltowski, Counsel on Aging Custodian, Gail Wenders, Counsel on Aging General Helper, Don Guzik, Police Administrative Clerk, Sylvia Buck, Quabog Hill Tourism, KP Law as Town Council, Mirick O'Connell as Special Town Council, Gary Lapine, Veteran Services Officer, Paul Sujian, Part-Time Police Officer, Chris Teigus, Part-Time Police Officer, Hector Melendez, Part-Time Police Officer, and John McGrath, Part-Time Police Officer.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. They are all appointed for one-year terms.
Right, I'll make a motion to reappoint the following people to another three-year term. Travis Baker, Cable Advisory Committee, Lisa Mandell, Cable Advisory Committee, Jonathan Dusty, Counsel on Aging Meal Coordinator, Barbara Keith, Counsel on Aging Mentor, I'm sorry, Member, Mary Jane Adam, Counsel on Aging Member, Joyce Stewart, Counsel on Aging Member, Robert D. Kelleher, Cultural Counsel, Adam Lavoy, Fire Department Chief, Richard K. Demetrius, Veterans Counsel, H. William Ramsey, Veterans Counsel, Rebecca A. Acera, Veterans Counsel, Judith E. Rice, Veterans Counsel, Lloyd A. Rice, Veterans Counsel, Scott Mansfield, Wiring Inspector, Christopher Bouchard, Full-Time Police Officer, Garrett Forten, Full-Time Police Officer, Michael Shea, Full-Time Police Officer, David Mellon, Part-Time Police Officer, and Renee Cody, Part-Time Police Officer.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. They are all appointed to a three-year term. Okay, line item transfers.
Each is a separate motion?
Yep.
All right. I will make a motion to accept the following transfer.
Did you wanna talk about any of them, or, because some of these are gonna be the first times you're hearing these.
Yeah. Okay.
So what are the reasons for each? The cemetery has 716, 80, and then 5,000 for salaries. There are cemetery and tree cutting, or from salaries and tree cutting?
Yes, from salaries to tree cutting.
Yeah. So, what's going on there?
So, the Cemetery Committee has asked, and has gotten an invoice, to take down a tree at the, one of the South Warren Cemetery. It has significant structural issues, and it poses a threat to historical stones. They have a request that was approved by the Finance Committee on Tuesday, and the request is before you this evening. And with regards to, your second request is for increase in fuel costs. They have some signs that were purchased from Mass Corp. on regulations that they want to implement in the cemeteries, and some lumber and hardware for the signs. And Cindy Baxter is here, if you guys have any more specific questions. Thank you, Cindy.
You guys know a lot of trees you need to remove. There's a lot of dead ones in there.
Well, this one has to do with the South Warren Cemetery. Mrs. Buck has gone to extensive work on making sure many of them have been restored to stones. She's actually reached out to some curators that are gonna move these stones out of the way, and then put them someplace else, and then replace them when the cutting is done. These are endangering the stones that have already been repaired at a good cost. So, it's kind of, it's almost more important than perhaps any other tree we have, because she's, it's been so engaged over long-term getting those stones repaired, so. And she's actually set it up so they're gonna do this then, and then they're gonna put it back, so we're kind of under a timeline crunch as to when we can get it done ourselves to satisfy.
When are you looking at doing it?
Actually, pretty quickly. I think the plan is to get it done in a couple of weeks.
So I'm good with cemetery.
You wanna do those motions, and then?
Well, let's just.
Or go through them all?
Okay. So we don't have to keep on stopping.
Sure.
So Parks and Rec, looking at 4,400 from Park's salary to Park's expense, and then $6,033.66 from Cummins Pond's salary to Park's expense.
So, the Finance Committee met again on Tuesday, heard this request. Both of these requests were approved by the Finance Committee. For the first one, the $4,400 request, that is because there's an increase in national grid bills that weren't anticipated, increasing costs for electricity, fuel, the portable potties for Deanie Cutter Park, and the certified playground wood chips. The portable potties, from my understanding, have gone up in costs just because of delivery costs, because of the fuel associated to get them to both parks, and the wood chips are a little bit more expensive than they were in the past years. So that was that expense. There's also a request from the Parks Department for $6,033.68. It's their plan to purchase a 14-foot panel Christmas tree for the town common, and they've asked.
Do you have enough Christmas trees?
Not commercial-grade trees, I have any commercial-grade trees.
Have you looked at about 200 of them around the building?
That's an exaggeration. I know there have been some old trees here that were all donated. I actually did a little digging to find out, I talked to Jimmy in Macon, and none of them are Parks-owned or whatever. We do use some of those big trees through the decorating committee to, that get put up-down, but none of them are worthy for the town common. Our tree down, the tree down there is not well. If you look, if you look at it close, it's pretty sad. We've been asked to take over the tree lighting, kind of milli-gushy was in the process of transferring some of that. She's gonna help us this year, but then I think she's, she's moving away from the tree lighting, and we want to, we think that our town deserves to look as good as all the neighboring towns with, we're like, kind of have a sad little tree.
We should look better.
Well, I wanna at least look as good. So, you know, we didn't feel like we could go on the town hall floor and ask for future budget for this kind of increase, but in this budget, because Cummins Pond has been closed, we aren't spending money on lifeguards, this, we thought this might be an opportunity to ask.
So it's already got money anyways.
So the tree costs the six grand, though?
So it is a panel tree, I actually, I brought.
What's it look like? Yeah, hey.
It's similar to what Ware has, so it's set up in a structure, and each part of it goes up in a section, so it's not branches like the trees that you wanna bring.
Yeah, I'm curious.
And, so, we are looking, this is the 14-foot, I think we are looking to do white lights, that's what the talk has been, but it goes up in sections, Highway, since we've restructured, and they're doing a lot of, you know, the.
And it's all LED and everything? Comes with the star and stuff?
Comes with the star. If lights, if lights go out, it still remains lit, and it's capable to replace individual bulbs or actual panels.
Is it one of those where you can change it from white to color?
No, unfortunately, you'd think that would be smart, right? But no.
That's the $2,000 upgrade.
Oh, some of these are unbelievably expensive. It also is expandable, if you ever wanted to make it bigger, you can, you can add to it in four-foot increments.
Oh, look at that 26-footer.
Yeah, I know.
That would be spectacular.
That's out of her first range.
What we could add next year?
It's got a three.
Add four feet to it?
Yeah, three-foot star on it. The 14-foot does, wow.
That'd be cool.
Thank you.
Now maybe we can just donate a few of the trees that we have here. Clear up some room.
Yeah. Anybody want Christmas trees, let me know.
And then, we have two for Board of Selectment, $28,821.41, from Health Insurance to Town Council, and then Board of Selectment for $7,488.22, from Street Light Maintenance to Selectment Matching Grant. Okay?
Is it actually Town Council, is that the name of the account, or is it?
Yes.
It's called Town Council.
No, yeah.
Yeah. So, with both of these requests, this would satisfy, the $28,821.41 is pretty much a closeout for fiscal year '22. The bills for June are estimated in here, but they're estimated because they haven't officially closed June's books till today. So they're estimated in here, I'm pretty confident that we'll have enough to cover those within there, so there won't be any additional requests with the estimates that were provided by KP and Mirick. There are two outstanding bills as well from last fiscal year that will have to be addressed at a special town meeting in the fall. And then with regards to the other request, the $7,488.22, that is for the EV charging station, that was a grant that was done some years ago and was removed. There are, there's an outstanding bill from October of '21 that needs to be paid, that the Guardian Energy Management Solutions is looking for payment.
So we did our due diligence on debating that charge and fighting it and trying to get that down, and you got it down a little bit. I was able to save $500. Bad decision. Should ask people before we decide to make changes or anything.
Yep.
We'll never do that again. We'll make sure we talk to you before we decide to put something in your park.
Yep.
Okay. So, and then Counsel on Aging, $240 for the elder bus to maintenance.
So that was a part of an invoice of $600. There was a $360 payment that was paid through Highway, and then there, leave the balance of $240, and that was for bumper blocks at the Senior Center. There was rods for the bumper blocks, the rebar was coming out and was causing a hazard. She needed to replace those, those are replaced, and the balance is $240, so she's asking for a transfer with regards to that.
Okay. Any questions about this? No.
Okay, from Warren Fire Department, $1,500 from EMT Training to Ambulance Expense.
So, I spoke to the chief, and this has been an issue since about two weeks ago, or a week ago. The tank within the ambulance has a leak in it. We are going to be trading that ambulance in in a few months, but it needs to get taken care of because we need an ambulance, you know, to service the town for the next couple months. And the chief has coordinated with the repair facility as of June 23rd. The process has started, the, there was a diagnosis, there's parts that have been secured, and this process has been started as of, you know, June 23rd. He's looking to have this transferred. This particular transfer has not been through the Finance Committee meeting yet, they will be meeting on the 14th of July. They will have a vote on that. You guys are seeing it firsthand tonight.
And you get the part for that one, chief?
We're still working on securing the tank itself, we're preparing for that, you know, we're ready for it, but sourcing it, unfortunately, the supply chain has just been awful for these things. It's not a manufactured part anymore, so we're trying to find an aftermarket one. As we speak, I mean, we have harnesses and stuff like that, but the tank itself, we're still trying to source. We look like we're finding one in the next day or two, but the whole thing has been in process, you know, for there. So I'm just, with this money and what I got left in the ambulance expense account, it should cover the costs once that comes in. I don't have an estimated time as to when that's gonna get, you know, I'm hoping as quickly as possible as we can get it shipped up to us. So, right now, you know, the ambulance is running, obviously, but it's something we have to repair before we trade it in.
Right, it's kind of critical.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it was just noticed for the first time on Thursday, it just started to beep slightly, so, you know, we jumped on it right away, but unfortunately, because of the supply chains, it's been a tough part to find. So we're still working on one part of the component, but it's coming together.
Do you have any questions about that?
No. I think it's important to take care of.
Do you have anything else to post there?
Nope, so those are all the line item transfers, the ones that were heard before the Finance Committee, they were all approved, and they're before you tonight. Like I said, the Fire Department is the first time, it's officially before this body, and it will be before the Finance Committee on the 14th of July.
Okay.
Yep. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the transfer for cemetery of $716.80 from salaries to supplies slash purchases.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to accept the transfer for cemetery of $5,000 from salaries to cemetery tree cutting.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to accept the transfer for Warren Parks and Rec, $4,400 from Park's salary to Park expense.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to accept the transfer for Warren Parks and Rec, $6,033.68 from Cummins Pond's salary to Park's expense.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to accept the transfer for the Board of Selectment for $28,821.41 from Health Insurance to Town Council.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to accept the transfer for the Board of Selectment, $7,488.22 from Street Light Maintenance to Selectment Matching Grant.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to accept the transfer for the Counsel on Aging, $2,033.62. Make a motion to accept the transfer for the Council on Aging, two hundred and forty dollars from SCM Elder Bus to Maintenance.
I'll second it, all in favor.
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufray, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Finally, I'll make a motion to accept the transfer for the Warren Fire Department, fifteen hundred dollars from EMT training to ambulance expense.
I'll second it, all in favor.
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufray, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, just to remind all, all the departments that, uh, if, if any of these things need to be encumbered, encumbrances are, are gonna have to be followed and, and filled out with Tammy.
Very good.
By the fifteenth.
Fourteenth.
Tracking that with everybody, we're working it?
Fourteenth.
She's, she says she's coming in on the, well, yeah, but the building's closed on the fourteenth, but she'll be in on the fifteenth to do encumbrances.
Okay. Before we move on, just wanna congratulate you and Bill, your daughter get married?
Yes.
Congratulations on that.
How awesome, yay!
Very good, nice wedding?
It was beautiful, absolutely beautiful.
I'm sure she looked like an angel. Congratulations to your boy.
Thank you.
Okay, so visit, visitor's code of conduct. Uh, you brought a code of conduct to us for visitors within the public buildings, and we have that.
Yeah.
Should be a copy. Here it is.
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, it's just a, um, it was, uh, brought to you last week as a review, I updated the, the, the word language to add that in there, you know, it was brought to my attention by, um, by our Council on Aging Director, that this would be a helpful tool, as a matter of fact, I, I, I wanted to address a little bit because of the training that I went to today, a lot of communities are doing these, and, um, it's not uncommon to have this in there, so that there's no really gray area when there's an issue that arises, especially if it's a, uh, you know, if there's an issue between the public and an employee, or a, uh, board or commission and the public, um, you know, there's, there's standards that need to be set, and, uh, these standards are, are common courtesy standards, uh, but, you know, sometimes need to be reminded, so, um, this is, this is not uncommon, and it kind of lays out, um, you know, what the, what parameters are expected of, of everybody.
Would this be posted?
Yes.
Like on the doors, or in the halls, or I don't know?
It would, it would have to be posted in, uh, the senior center somewhere, I mean, it, and it.
I mean, wouldn't it be in here too?
We could post it here too, as, if the board adopted it as well.
Yeah, I think any, any place where people are coming in.
It makes sense to have it all, all buildings, because again, um, you know, it's not specific to just one area, because we do have people that come in here and try to cau- cause disturbances at times, and their language and, um, attitude is very inappropriate, and it would be nice to be able to forewarn them, so they know that these things will not be tolerated until they will be asked to leave, um, if they act like that, so, do you wanna, um, read the thing?
Sure.
For record?
So, can I ask, this applies to in-person interactions?
Yes.
What about phone interactions or email interactions? Would, um, I mean, a lot of this stuff is.
I think those are a lot easier to deal with, because with an email.
It's on record.
It's on record, and you can just forward it to say, okay, this person's being harassing here.
Okay.
And it depends on what's being said, at that point, you might wanna get police department involved in it, because it's threatening in nature, um, but also a phone call, click, you don't have to deal with it, hang up it.
Okay, yeah.
You know, what's your name? Okay.
Yeah, or if the conversation starts to get out of control.
When you wanna talk civilized, call me back.
Yeah.
And I'll back any employee that, that doing that, because.
Yeah.
Nobody needs to be talked to, or ta- talked down to, and berated, to try to do their job, so, do you wanna read it for record?
Sure. So the visitor's code of conduct, the town of Warren's officials and employees strive to provide a positive experience for those visiting town facilities by the following professional standards of conduct policy, in addition to the town supports a workplace that is conducive to personal safety and security, and is free from intimidation or violent acts, the town does not tolerate workplace violence, including the threat of violence by anyone who conducts business with the town, the town will not tolerate hara- harassing conduct that affects employees' employment conditions, which interfer- which interferes unreasonably with individuals' performance, or that creates an intimidating, hostile, or offensive work environment, complying with the code of conduct is required by all people doing business with town employees and any official board or committee of the town, violators who do not comply with this policy may be asked to leave the premises. Expected conduct, avoid causing disturbances or disruptions, show respect for others, building facilities, and personal property of others, any discriminatory practices will not be tolerated, using common courtesy when interacting with others, do not engage in any lewd or offensive behavior or language, any form of violence is prohibited, smoking, drinking, alcohol, or appearing to be under the influence of any illegal substance is prohibited, repeated violations may result in permanent suspension of facility privileges, thank you for your visit and cooperation.
Good with it?
Good, yeah.
So, I'll do a motion to accept the visitor's code of conduct for town buildings.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufray, aye, the motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, members.
Did anybody have any questions about that? Yes.
Joe Conrad, I think years ago, we had a, a bylaw on the book about foul language, where you could actually be arrested.
I don't think you can do that anymore. I'm sure you can't.
Freedom of speech.
Because you could fall under the First Amendment. And it could become a constitutional violation by doing that. We wanna stay away from that.
It, it basically dealt with foul language.
So this is basically saying the conduct of you is not gonna be tolerated, if you are, you're gonna be asked to leave. It's good to have it in writing, posted, so people can see. Thank you.
Thank you.
So warrants and bills.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants, number one oh seven payroll, sixty-eight thousand forty-four dollars, one oh eight vendor, eighty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and seven cents.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufray, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to pay the following bills, uh, the following four for BG Mechanical Services, four hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents, two for fourteen hundred seventy-five dollars, and another one for three hundred and eighty-one dollars, uh, National Grid Streetlights, a credit of twenty-one thousand fifty-five dollars and seventy cents, uh, sorry, seven cents, Guardian Energy Management Solutions for eighty-four hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents, WB Mason Inc. for sixty-eight ninety-five, WB Mason for thirty-five ninety-nine, BEC, uh, for fixing a sink in the women's restroom for four hundred forty-three dollars and eighteen cents, um, the following four for KP Law, one hundred and fourteen dollars, five thousand eighty-five dollars and thirty-six cents, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, thirteen hundred thirty dollars, the following three for Mira Connell, seven thousand one hundred eighty-four, eighty-five dollars and eight cents, two thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy dollars, and then My Merlin, which is the copier lease, is eleven hundred seven dollars and twenty-three cents.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufray, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, now on to minutes, there are no minutes, so we're good with that, uh, new business, we have any new business?
I don't think so. No.
No? Okay, old business?
Nope.
Town Administrator Report, you're up, Tim.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and thanks, members of the board, um, my, my report is, is brief in nature, uh, this evening, um, just to give the guy, uh, just to give the, the board an update, um, with regards to the CPR and first aid training that was conducted this week, um, Sue, uh, from the Parks Department coordinated to get her, um, summer, uh, uh, work program trained, I wanna thank Officer Salugian, uh, and the chief for his coordination, uh, with making this happen, working together, um, to get these trainings done, uh, Officer Salugian offered the training course, uh, this past Tuesday at five o'clock, it ran for a quick four hours, um, and they did AED training, they did first aid, they did CPR, and he touched upon the stop the bleed as well, and that's kind of the scope of what his, uh, trainings are gonna be about for moving forward with employees that are interested, um, I'm gonna be working with him on some dates, we do have a list, uh, of, of employees that are interested, uh, to, uh, take this course, we're gonna, uh, get that, um, started, um, probably next month sometime.
Okay.
So that, it was a pretty good, um, first, first round of, of that. The finance committee met, uh, obviously, this week, um, they went over all the finances, they were all approved, uh, and then on Friday of, uh, last week, um, we had a, a phone call with Ms. Deborah Beben, um, it was myself, Tammy, and, and Rich was on there, and I, I, I talked to the board about this, it's more along the lines of the back of the house, more accounting aspects of this grant, this, uh, economic development administration, uh, grant that, that the town got, um, it, it was more along the lines of how to start it up, what's the process in terms of, um, getting, um, the treasury linked with the federal government, this is the first time we're gonna have an account like this, so Dawn is gonna be back next week, she's on vacation this week, um, when she gets back next week, I'm gonna have a meeting with her to set up, to link this account with the federal government so that we can, uh, the town can process funds, um, from the EDA, um, we're gonna be working with that, with, uh, the accounting department, uh, to make sure that they're, they're, communication of, of that, um, there's also a, um, it was talked about in this, this conference, I know that when we originally had this, um, this discussion back in late March, early April, um, the use of ARPA funds were discussed, uh, for this match, um, and throughout reading this, um, the, the instruction manual, which is several pages that they gave us, um, they're very clear on, they don't want to use, uh, they want non-federal dollars to be used as the match, so we're, we're gonna be able to, um, to do this still, and make this happen, uh, through, um, the surpluses that were, that were determined, uh, this past fiscal year, we will be, uh, going in for line item transfer on the fourteenth, we'll be encumbering those funds, and, and since we have a signed contract with the federal government, uh, that, uh, as of this June, we're covered, okay, so you will, you will have, in the next coming up, um, months, or the next coming up weeks, you will have that line item transfer in front of you for that, uh, along with the finance committee as well, um, you will also have, um, some additional ARPA funds, ARPA funds have taken a little bit longer to process, we've processed, um, everything, I sat down with Karen yesterday, we've got the, um, we've put in our, our, our code that they requested just last week, so we're on the list to get the funding, the funding should be coming within a month or two.
This is the second.
The second round, yeah, um, so it should be coming anytime now, um, so you're gonna have the determination of that additional seventy, and the second round before you very shortly, um, so, um, you'll be, have to be, be making some decisions on that, um, other than that, that, that was the highlights of, of, of the week so far.
And then with the next round of ARPA, we're gonna have to look into, I know we talked with the library, and helping them update their computers for doing that, if we can do something like that.
West Warren?
For both the libraries.
Both, okay.
Warren and West Warren, um, there was some issues, I know she was talking about doing one computer at a time, but if we're gonna do it, we might as well do what we can, see if we can get a, a bulk cost on getting enough laptops to cover them for a little while, and then look at other departments too, we can put it out, once we have the money, put it out to other departments, if there's projects that may apply, um, to us utilizing ARPA, then we can look into new projects too.
One other thing that was, uh, that was done this week as well, the, all the bids were, were, were sent back in, the streetlight maintenance, okay, and there was three bidders, um, there was Tango, Daigle, and, and one other company, um, Reading, I think, um, was the company, um, and Daigle was the, was the winner.
Okay, were they ones that previously put in for?
Um, no, no.
They're new, right?
Yeah.
They're new, uh, they were much lower than Tango, uh, in terms of their pricing structure, so the town is saving money just by doing that, um, and their, 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 their overall, uh, plan was more comprehensive than the other bidder, um, and they have a twenty-four hour, um, assistance line, they're gonna have, um, they're, they're in Massachusetts, uh, company, um, and they met all the, the licensing requirements, they met all the OSHA standards, uh, they, they gave a list of all their equipment trucks, they had some great references throughout other communities in Massachusetts, so, um, you know, it's, uh, it, we saved some money.
Cool, all right, good, you're good.
And hopefully better service.
We'll see.
Yeah. Yeah, nothing like calling California to fix something in here, then you gotta call somebody else, and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right, anything else, sir?
That's it.
Very good, all right, well, thank you very much, and we're on to comments and concerns, are there any comments?
I don't.
See, are there any concerns?
I don't.
Sure. I don't?
I do.
Sure.
Um, Cindy Baxter sent me an email saying that they are still having people go through the parking lot to get to Cummins Pond to swim in it, and when she put it out on Facebook, somebody says, well then, don't go through the construction guy, site, go through the, um, cemetery, but she wanted to make sure that everybody knew that the Board of Health is not testing Cummins Pond for E. coli, so if you are swimming there, it is illegal, first of all, it's trespassing, because we have closed it, and the town is not responsible for your health, if you are swimming there, so she wanted to know if the board thought it would be okay to put up some signs, other places besides the one that they have put up right there, at the construction site.
Any of our property, yeah.
Yeah, because there's other ones besides the cemetery to get, to Cummins Pond, so.
Yeah, because again, it's, it's dangerous to be swimming there alone, if, if something hap- something happens, um, God forbid, you know, you, you can be hurt very badly, um, also, again, you know, nobody's testing that water right now, so it's, we're not saying it's not safe, but don't take the risk, um, and you shouldn't be swimming there anyways, because the chief might have one of his guys swing by and pick you up and move you out of there, um, so, don't do it, please, um, you know, we're, we're trying, the, things are moving forward, and hopefully, you know, it'll all, all be open for next year, um, I know, you know, my kids loved swimming there, and, you know, a little sad they can't go there right now, but, you know, it is what it is, we, we had to do this upgrade, and it's taking up a lot of time, and closed the beach because of it, for safety, so please don't swim at Cummins Pond, it's not safe right now to do so, and stay out of there because it's trespassing.
Water treatment plant is slated to be finished, um, in the fall, I believe it was. I attended the meeting on, uh, Wednesday, yesterday.
Chief, did you have any comments, either of you, about that?
No, the, the water department shut it. It's closed, trespassing. It's water shit.
Because Cummins Pond is owned by the water department and is private property.
All right. Do you have any other comments?
Nope.
Anybody from the public have any comments and concerns? Chief?
Uh, I just want to take time to recognize Westbrook Field Chief Tom O'Donnell. Today was his last day. He retired after over thirty years as a law enforcement. I believe twenty-six years as the Westbrook Field Chief.
Wow.
So I want to say congratulations and recognize him tonight.
Well, congratulations, Chief O'Donnell. That's amazing. It's a long career.
Yeah.
I didn't realize he had that much time in. He doesn't look that old. He's actually looking pretty slim right now, too.
He is.
He's looking good, so.
Started out in Old Seabrook, Seabrook.
Yeah.
Connecticut?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great guy, great chief.
Yeah, he is a good guy.
We'll, we'll miss working with him side by side. He's, he's been around for a long time.
Do we know who's replacing him?
Uh, they don't yet.
They haven't selected anyone?
It was kind of a quick thing. It was one day I was talking to him, he was getting a new three-day contract, and next week he was retiring.
Okay.
Yeah, it's quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Well, good for him. He's got a lot of time in and, you know, time to rest up and spend some time on the beach, just not Warren's beach.
Yeah.
All right. Cool. Anything else?
Oh, I do have one more thing. Oh, I could do that too. I just want to rub it in, I got another grant today.
Oh, very good.
Ah, very nice.
What did you get a grant for?
Uh, we got a, I applied to the state for a PVT, photoprogram test. And, uh, we, I got the email actually this afternoon that we were, we were accepted to get one.
Nice.
Nice, we're the last day of the fiscal year, huh? It slides that way.
Right? And then, also, we just want to touch on, Adam and I, um, we went to a three-day training this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh, it was put on by actually LSU University.
And FEMA.
And FEMA.
Yeah.
It was a great class. It was all on, uh, active shooters. It was, the last day was all scenario-based, um, hands-on scenario-based. It was, uh, it was a great class.
Very intense, you know, dealt with, you know, different situations that have occurred, different, you know, uh, environments they may run into and a lot of scenario play. Um, you know, everything from hands-on, tourniquets to, you know, everything to, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on out there with that kind of thing. But it was a very informative class. There was people there from, it was held at Leamester, but there was people there probably from, I would say, maybe twenty different communities somewhere in there. So, uh, you know, uh, we had, I think they had some people from the governor's office show up and take some pictures and stuff, uh, I thought on the last day. But, uh, really, really neat class and, uh, we're hoping to bring some of that stuff back here.
Very good.
Yeah, so.
It must be very sobering though, huh?
It's, it's, it's a very sad reality that this is where we are. Uh, you know, but, um, you know, it's very clear that the more planning, the, the better. I mean, these events, each one of them's inherently a little bit different, but, um, they all have some very unique, you know, similarities to. And, um, you know, it's, you can, it's very clear that the ones that haven't had any training at all, things go south even quicker than, than they do with some that, that may have some, uh, some training and background in that. So, um, you know, again, I, I do think we have a, a great partnership with our school. We've been working many years on the safety plan, so I do think we're ahead of the game in some places, but there are certainly things that we, we, we can certainly do to, you know, to improve what we do. You know, I mean, and that honestly, one of the biggest talk topics, you know, one of the, one of the things I took away from the class, you know, that, that kind of sat with me afterwards, it was a, uh, a retired NYPD, um, uh, Special Force, uh, u, uh, officer that was there from their special, uh, ESU unit, I believe it was. And so very knowledgeable person, who's very knowledgeable. We had some people from Phoenix Fire, uh, all over the country. Uh, so it was, it was really neat, but one of the things that he said that kind of took away from the class that, you know, he recently purchased a very small specialized dog, uh, like a, like a Yorkie-type thing from a, from a high, high-end breeder. And he said in the class that when he went to purchase that dog, he had to take everything out. He had to step into a secure room, present his ID, through a piece of glass, get into the next area because they've had these dogs that are worth a lot of money, stolen from a lot of these places. By the time he was said and done, got the dog, exchanged the money, came out, proved he was who he was, you know, it was very clear to him that these types of places are locked down ten times better than most of our schools. And that's pretty sobering, uh, to realize that, you know, that we protect, that some, not intentionally, but sometimes we protect things like dogs and, and high-end jewelry and other things like that more than we protect the kids. You know, so, you know, that was one thing that kind of was a big takeaway from that class. And when you think about it, he's right. You know, he's a hundred percent right. It's something as simple as keeping the doors locked and everything can make such a huge difference, and it's been proven time and time again. So this thing was, we're going to be working on with the schools and stuff to make sure that, you know, people have that understanding that, you know, sometimes the, the simplest of something can go wrong real quick. And while it's unintentional, it can have huge repercussions, so.
With that, I think one of the biggest things is people have well intentions. They want to be safe. They want to protect our kids, but sometimes complacency takes over. And when you're always sitting there saying, well, it's never happened here. It never happened in Aurora either, or.
Valdi or.
Valdi or, you know, there's so many other places that it's never happened before. And it was first for them. And we just need to, you know, get better training, make sure we're all prepared, make sure you guys are ready to go if anything like that does kick off. And make sure the schools do what they need to do to, to protect the students and the teachers. And I think we're very much committed to doing that in any way we can. And, you know, it's great that you guys got this training and, you know, I hope going through the training and knowing you're, having your experiences with, that you have within the community, that you already are figuring out things that you probably want to fix right off the bat. And we welcome to know about those changes so we can help you in any way we can. And I think that's why we kind of kicked off the whole thing where we talked about, you know, active shooter response, um, you know, discussions to get the school involved and get everybody involved in this, along with the town, along with us and Highway and everybody. Because as you guys probably learned, it's not just police. It's not just them doing it. Everybody else gets involved too. You got Highway blocking roads and, you know, you, you got the money people making sure you get in resources and, you know, if we had an emergency manager, well, we do have an emergency manager. But having that emergency manager contact different departments for resources, or maybe even different highway departments to try to get equipment. Because these things become really, really big, really, really quick. And we want to make sure we have a plan in place. This way we can prevent it. Do you have anything else?
No, like, like we said, um, it was a great class. And it was free, which is even better. LSU puts on all these different free trainings, which I was looking at, uh, all different ones, but it was an eye-opener. And like you said, this training was, it was probably fifty-fifty, pleasing buyer, right?
I would say, yeah, it was pretty evenly matched, actually. It was, it worked out well.
So it, it basically taught us how we want to work together in a situation like this.
Unified commands and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we've both taken similar classes, but this one here was a real drill. I mean, they did everything from wound care to, you know, and everything and, and every person, you know, the police protected fire and they protected the teams going in to extract people and everything. So, and I mean, it was very realistic. They had, you know, not only, you know, uh, you know, dummies and mannequins and stuff like that, but on the third day, it was all live victims. It was all live volunteers that were in full blush, you know, full-on injuries, full-on things that needed to be, you know, uh, you know, tourniquets and everything like that. So, and, and I mean, they don't just, you know, I mean, they're screaming, they're, they're screaming. It's the lights are off, the music's on, the, you know, I mean, anything that, anything that was there to. Yeah, like real, real, real blanks, like, you know, I mean, so it was, you know, the environment, you know, it's, it's, when you get into a situation where it's simulated that it's real, it's, it's, it's a game changer. It's definitely different than sitting at a PowerPoint, you know, so, uh, you know, it was, uh, you know, it's, it's different. And, and while it's a sad, sad, tough world sometimes, you know, I mean, at least, at least these things are there for some resources to bring back.
And it helps residents kind of understand too, when they kind of see what's going on and they see these drills and they see that you're taking the active part of it and stuff. And they, they need to understand in, in an actual active shooter, when it's happening, the police are going to bypass anybody that's injured. They're going to go, and it's not that they don't care, it's not that they don't want to help or do anything like that. They have to because their one job is to stop the killing. And the only way you can do that is to get to that shooter and stop them. And, you know, if you try, take that minute to try to treat somebody, that's other people dying.
You're absolutely right, but they actually, this course also too, was very incorporated very heavily that once that threat was neutralized, these guys go into lifesaving mode. Every one of them, every one of them was doing tourniquets. Every one of them was doing, you know, uh, I know, wound packing, everything. So I mean, they, you know, and they were taught ways to, you know, to shut off an artery while still being in a, in a position where they could return fire if they needed to, using a knee or something like that. So, you know, they weren't just, you know, okay, come on in now, everything's, you know, they were hands-on doing stuff. Law enforcement was tasked with that and the instructors were very clear that you, you're going to save the lives until EMS gets in here, you know, and they, they're going to take over and do their thing, but you're going to start it, you know, uh, with your, with your people. And, you know, several people, everyone had a different role, you know, different, you know, different situations and different areas and stuff. But, you know, those, like you said, you're absolutely right, they're going to step past people in order to make it a safe or, or at least a warm zone and not a hot zone anymore. But, you know, they also were responsible for patient care. They did a great job, law enforcement, so.
Did you guys identify that, any equipment that you need?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, no, honestly, yeah, I mean, that might be something that.
It's kind of an eye-opener when you realize like, oh, that would be nice to have.
Losing my voice over the last couple of days. Um, it's not even expensive stuff. That's something we can, we're working on some ARPA projects to work, kind of afford to gym and stuff, but some of these little to-go bags and stuff that we don't have all the stuff we should have or, or need more of it, that would be perfect. And it's penny stuff. It's, this is not thousands of dollars. These are tourniquets, gauzes, ba, you know, specialized bags, you know.
Little lights.
Yeah, lights and stuff like that. This is, these are hundreds of dollars, not thousands of dollars. So I mean, that's something we can bring forward to help with the, you know, each one of the officers, make sure they have a go-bag and everything that's fully stocked and stuff. So we can certainly talk about that.
Very good. All right. Just let us know whatever you need.
Sure.
Yes. These guys should be commended for what they did last night. The search for a couple of teenagers on the river. Not only did they basically join forces, but they brought in other towns to help between, what was it, four o'clock and six o'clock last night?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the call came in when we were pulled down our way back from the training, so ironically, two of the people that were in the training with us are specialized drone handlers. And they followed us right out there and they put the drone up right off the bat and started searching the river. You know, it resolved relatively quickly. You know, we had some intel that, you know, there was potentially a juvenile that had, was seen floating down the river. That's why we activated the Swiftwater Rescue Team, uh, and some other resources like the air wing and stuff. So that was our initial report, but, uh, you know, quickly, we, you know, within, I'd say twenty-five minutes or so, we had another report that all parties were potentially out of the water. Officers were sent to that location where they were. It was found that they were there, so we were able to, to clear everybody out of there. But, uh, you know, that's one thing you don't want to, you don't want to hesitate and not call those specialized teams and stuff, you know, and then, and then find out there really is an issue and they're thirty minutes out, so, uh, or more. So, uh, you know, while it was, you know, I'm sure the, the community was wondering what was kind of going on. They saw a lot of activity moving here, there, and everywhere. It was more precautionary than anything in case we actually did have someone. And there wasn't, there actually was children in the water. So, you know, it was based on some real, some real, you know, factual evidence, you know, and just fortunately, they were able to get out after, you know, after, you know, being a little bit of a, an area where they got separated there. So, uh, like I said, all parties were there, but we did have, you know, several different, uh, communities that are on the Swiftwater Rescue Team as well as environmental police, state police, air wing, um, uh, and Westbrook Field on one end, Fire, searching part of the river, and Palmer on the other side. So, uh, yeah, quite a, quite a few, uh, agencies, but it was done to make sure that we had enough people there in case we actually had to get in there and do a, a tech, you know, a technical rescue, so.
Very good. Good job, guys. Nobody got hurt?
Nobody was hurt. Nope, that was the Bay attack, so.
All right, good job. Okay? If anything, chalk it up to some training.
That's what it is.
Thank you, Joe. Does anybody else have any comments and concerns? Anybody in Zoom world? No?
Nope.
Is there anybody even in Zoom world?
Yep. Bev's in Zoom world.
No? Hi, Bev. Okay. So I have no comments and concerns. Um, correspondence. Okay, we have a couple of things here. I found it.
I didn't say anything.
So first thing is CSX Transportation. They're going to be doing herbicide, um, treatment along the railway and that's going to be on July fifth and conclude on, or before, um, August fifth? So they're doing it for a month?
It's May 11.
Okay. They'll commence, yeah, so they're going to be applying, um, herbicides via low-pressure spray from a rail-mounted truck in order to manage weeds in the railroad bed and applied one time in two thousand twenty-two, only in non-sensitive areas and buffer zones to sensitive areas. So it's a yearly operational plan. And if you have any questions or anything like that, we do have, uh, email address, um, for our contact with CSX Transportation. And his name is Stephen G. Herzog, and he's the project manager. Okay.
And that will be up on the website when we do the minutes.
We'll put this on the website, Karen's saying. And then Comcast is changing their service. Uh, you can see them on their website, uh, Xfinity.com slash programming changes. Okay? And then the next meeting date is July seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-two at six PM.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. We are adjourned.